Well, Stacey Ashland, welcome. Glad that you could be here with us.
Thank you.
I think the best way to perhaps open this conversation is to ask you to share with us your critique and observations about the current school board. You've been watching them for many years. It's been a challenging time for the school district through the last couple of superintendents. And I'm wondering if you, in general, feel like they have navigated through that, those storms well? Or do you have criticisms for the way they've managed the district in the last few years, two years?
Critique and observations?
Mm-hmm.
Over the years, over this past two issues?
Couple of years, yeah.
A lot of things have improved, yes. I have been involved watching this district for close to 18 years, give or take. And in recent, in these past two years, I have definitely, obviously, seen improvement in focus on the equity. Title IX in particular, but equity in general is coming more into the conversation as well it should. And several of us have been trying to bring it elevated to that level for a long time. So that has really impressed me, that we are talking more and more particularly about Title IX protections based on gender. And along with that, obviously, we still have significant work to do on the achievement gap for students of color and socioeconomic factors. So we've also made, over the past two to four years, I think, a lot of headway in terms of mental health awareness, focus on building the new wellness center at GUN. When that is complete, it's going to change the entire feel of the campus. So I think that conversation has been elevated. We've put more attention into staffing counselors and wellness staff for that reason. But it's not anything as quick as two years to say, oh, we're going to eliminate the stigma surrounding mental illness, or even so much as depression and anxiety, which is common among adolescents as well as adults in this area and many others. So those are kind of, I would say, the main things that I've been impressed with over the past couple of years. And critique-wise, you know, it hasn't been pretty in terms of budget and oversight. So that is obviously a hard part of the job, and I'm looking forward to working. I'm glad we have a strong new superintendent on board, clean slate, very optimistic that we can work together with this superintendent in a more mutually supportive way. I believe that just as parents and teachers nurture and support children, that in a way the board and the district has a responsibility to nurture and support teachers and principals and staff, so that we are not having the amount of turnover we've had, the significant turnover in the administration in the past year. It's just not sustainable to say, oh, out with the bad and clean slate, because then where do we go from here if every time somebody goes bad, we throw them out and start over? That just doesn't build a long-term, sustainable district. And since 80% of our voters in this race do not have school-aged children, I believe that what the community is really looking for is a high-quality district that is less volatile, as we've been in the past couple of years, in terms of that.
So if you'd been on the board, how would you handle it if you come to the conclusion that senior administrators are not doing their job? And, I mean, what would be your solution, other than replacing them?
Oh, yeah. Obviously, I mean, over the course of, say, the past four years, or some of the board members have been on, one board member should have been on, I believe this was her 10th year, that is a longer-term conversation, because, yes, if it does come down to the point that, you know, we've tried X, Y, and Z, we've tried, you know, multiple times to mentor this person through this role and make sure they have the resources they need to get the job done. If it's not working, it's not working. There is a time and place for that. But I would hope that we wouldn't yet again be in a situation where we were replacing such a large percentage of our assistant principals, principals, and district administration over the course of a year or two.
Were any of those district administrative departures ones that you didn't think should have been made?
No. I wasn't involved at that detail level to know. For example, I mean, the more I learn, the more I talk to people, I don't feel that those decisions were made in error. But that is prefaced with, you don't know what you don't know. If you hear from these number of people and they say, you know, he or she was great and should have stayed, or he or she was horrible and needed to go, then you've got two people, and I'm not a journalist, but there's a lot more research that you can do beyond that to really find out the details of what went wrong when, what were the warning signs, and who had a say in the matter to do something about it? Because the board hires and fires a superintendent, the superintendent has all that staff, but then there's kind of like a bottleneck. And so I want to make sure that administratively, we're not, you know, at risk like that again, if that makes sense.
Do you think that Principal Kim DiOrio, in her, she said she was under a lot of pressure, and I think the common wisdom is that she didn't just resign for her health, that she was pressured out. Do you think that that was an error in handling of, you know, her role in investigation of sexual assault at Pally?
So I'm a GUN parent, and I have one kid that's already graduated from GUN and another one who's a junior over at GUN. And I recently met with the RISE Committee, and I'm familiar with Michelle Higgins on RISE, because I've worked with her in the past as well. I believe it's Responsive Intervention to a Safe Environment, or something is the acronym. There was one GUN parent on that committee, and her last child has graduated GUN. So everybody I spoke to is a Pally parent. This is not a unique problem to the Pally side of town. That's like the first thing. And so, yes, I'm hearing, oh, Kim was wonderful in these aspects, and Kim made grave errors in these aspects. And again, without doing the further deep investigation into exactly who said what in writing, or on text, or on the phone with who at one time, my understanding from the RISE Committee, or Task Force actually, was mistakes were made on multiple levels. That was my impression, that Principal DiOrio didn't have quite the oversight that perhaps would have prevented this kind of an error in terms of her assistant principal staff, but also that she didn't have the support from above when she said shouldn't, you know, we file, open a complaint procedure on this. So I understand that it was both above and below where the failures happened. So I can't specifically say she should have been retained, she should have been fired, because I don't have that background information at this point. I do believe that the RISE Committee has, RISE Task Force has a very accurate assessment of what happened at Pally with the staff and some of the kind of ongoing trauma, they repeatedly use the word trauma with me, that the staff feels and felt going through this, you know, if we report, then this happens, and if we don't report, then this happens. That's a pretty significant statement. And it hearkens back to what the GUN teachers and staff felt over the years with the two suicide clusters, a severe sense of trauma. Who made the mistake? Who didn't catch the error? And what do we do now?
Yeah.
Because no human wants that on their conscience, that they let something like that happen.
So if elected to the board, do you think that there's a certain step that you would advocate for to sort of move us past the trauma that there?
Yeah. And again, the RISE Task Force, and that's why I'm working to get some new GUN parents on it, because it is not a Pally-specific situation. But, yeah, there's a lot of specific steps. And it's education, it's not just sex ed curriculum to our students, okay? It's also education of our parent community, which is real tough, because it only is PTA that can do it, and then even only so many people show up. But it's also education of our teachers and our administrators, too. I mean, it's a difficult, complex subject. A lot of people don't want to talk about it, and a lot of people misunderstand it. You know, oh, if we're going to go to that line and say that that boy saying that thing to that girl is considered sexual harassment, then what about the five-year-old who, you know, backhands into the butt of another five-year-old at kindergarten? I mean, just because it's complex doesn't mean it doesn't need to be done. So it's beyond that, I can't go into more specifics, that's what I would do if elected on the board. But I do believe that the RISE Task Force, going forward, is still continuing to understand the scope of the work at hand, and needs the support of the administration and the board to make it happen.
There is definitely kind of a conflicted dynamic, like you mentioned, of the teachers and staff, particularly at Pally, who feel, not only at Pally, but who feel that the new focus on Title IX and UCP and compliance has sort of tipped almost overboard, and is burdening them in a way that's distracting from their educational responsibilities. And then the other side of that, you have parents, community members, and students who feel like, you know, Title IX compliance has been a really difficult issue for the district for years, and it's long overdue to bring the district into full compliance to protect the civil rights of students. So as a board member, how would you balance those two viewpoints, which seem to be at odds with each other?
They're not at odds. The law matters, and the law is complex, and we need to comply. So, you know, and it happens whether you're talking under IDEA, or ADA, or Title IX, or Section 504, anything, the law matters, the law needs to be complied with. Is it a difficult job? Absolutely. Should our teachers be paid, like, a lot more? Absolutely. Should they be supported? Should they be trained? Should they be mentored? Should we have co-teaching, two teachers in every class? You know, the law matters. They're not at odds. And education is tough. And I think our teachers know that. They know that. When every parent comes and complains, you know, you taught everyday math and you didn't teach the traditional method, they're like, okay, education is tough, not everything works for every child. It's the same with adults. Adults are much harder to educate than children. I live with teenagers and I live with adults. And to try to get an adult to do something, somebody our age who's been doing it that way all along, it's tough. They're not open to it. I mean, but how do you have that conversation? You've got to keep having that conversation. So I don't know if that directly answers it, but it kind of feels like what I can say at this point.
I also wanted to ask you, of course, about special ed, since you've been an advocate, and you're also a special education parent yourself. Just sort of your, maybe also your critique of sort of how the district has tried to reform special ed in the recent years, there's been sort of starts and finishes to, there's fits and starts to the progress. And so your critique, and if you're disappointed at all with the pace of that progress?
I'm not disappointed at all, looking back. I would never be, I would choose Palo Alto Unified in a heartbeat. And I'm not a special ed parent, I'm not a special ed advocate. The word is inclusion. And I said that from day one. My child was born in Palo Alto, diagnosed as deaf from newborn hearing screening at Stanford Hospital. And I was, we were taken on a tour at Jackson Hearing Center over at Fair Meadow Elementary when he was an infant. So he was in the car carrier seat. Oh, we've got a great program for deaf kids, he has to be three. Okay, well, so then, you know, you deal with the county, that's where early intervention goes, from birth through three, Santa Clara County. And that's when I started reading legal books, because, you know, by default, my kid would have been placed on a bus at 18 months and taken down to the far south end of San Jose and put in a program that primarily focused on sign language and a little bit of total communication. And there was not a single profoundly deaf child that they could show me from that program that had learned to speak. Cochlear implants were not new, but they were new in infants. So first of all, the word is inclusion. When we came into the district at age three, is when you officially transition out of early intervention with the county and into the district, they said, what? You're talking full inclusion? Like, it was like foreign language. And I said, yeah, he's going to go into full-time mainstream kindergarten 100%, and whatever supports he needs to make that happen, it will happen. Got his cochlear implant from a surgeon who is in our neighborhood in Barron Park, got a second one at the end of kindergarten. Full-time inclusion. If you're talking about special ed as a place, it's not a place, it's services. So by inclusion, yes, my child with his issues and challenges has a right to be not just in the academics, or not just at the assemblies, but fully included in the community of that school. We've made great headway over at Barron Park, Breones, at several of the elementary schools, I believe all of them now. Those kids are no longer on a separate roster under special ed, they're on the roster of their general ed classroom. They hang a backpack there, and their lunch in their jacket, so that they're not forgotten in the class pictures, because you wouldn't believe how frequently that kind of thing would happen. Forgotten in the pictures, forgotten in the field trips, forgotten in the assemblies. We've made huge headway in inclusion, and that I'm really proud of. I don't feel that I personally, I just talk my talk, and I do the work that I do, and I've been doing it with several other parents and some phenomenal teachers and administrators over the years. But we've made incredible headway. And when I hear backlash on that, and they say, well, some children have severe disabilities and they can't be included, I say, remember, the I in IEP stands for individualized, not inclusion. So that's what it stands for, Individualized Education Plan. So if what you need is a separate classroom, if what you need is a mainstream classroom, or if what you need is a combination, that's the law. Now, does the funding follow? No. Is it more difficult to implement than that? Yes. But those are what parents' rights are for their children. And it was difficult for us to comprehend and get our heads around. We are incredibly fortunate, we had every resource available with college degrees, and I quit my job, and to this day, we never remodeled the house, and I'm happy about it. Because the first thing we did is say, how do we help the parents who don't have what we have? And who have a child? Because if you look in those programs at the county and in segregated classrooms, the majority of the children often tend to be the ones whose families do not have the resources to provide the best, because the law doesn't provide you the best education, provides you appropriate. So I think we've made incredible headway in this district, proud of that. Have we gone far enough? No. No. Our legal expenses, our legal budget for this current school year is bigger than our special ed budget. That's a little out of whack.
Well, and much of it's being spent on special ed activity.
Not necessarily.
Well, there's a big chunk of money that's been spent over the last three or four years, and essentially litigating with parents that are trying to get the services you're describing.
Exactly. Litigating against parents.
Right.
Is something I, is the balance that disturbs me.
Right.
Because the district's opportunity, you know, responsibility is to serve the students.
Right. But you're painting a, you're painting a very positive picture here, and I'm wondering what you believe still needs to be done.
A lot. A lot.
And especially in terms of the district's mindset and approach to these conflicts that develop between families and the district over their respective views of the needs of a child.
Yeah. And the devil's in the detail. So if you're entitled to what's appropriate, who decides what's appropriate? If there's one parent on an IEP team, and everybody else around the table is a teacher or an administrator or a professional, a lot of times, that parent doesn't really feel like they have a chance, because all these people have the authority. I never brought an attorney to my meetings, ever. I never, I don't advise parents to bring attorneys to their meetings.
Right, but as you said, you're a college-educated, well-equipped to advocate on behalf of your child.
If I could wave my magic wand, would up the parent education involved with raising a child with special needs? Special needs is a very broad term, okay? Under an IEP, that's 12-ish percent of our kids. And it's not capped at 12%, because there are no more children. It's mysteriously 12%, you know, 10 to 15% in all the districts, because the funding isn't there when you identify more than that with an IEP. When you get into a 504, and parents come to me, these days, the parents come, I mean, the beginning, it was, okay, you've got a child with a special need, you call Stacy, you call somebody on the community advisory committee for special needs, for special education. But over the years, the calls that came to me were, the vast majority, my child may or may not have a learning issue, may or may not have anxiety or depression, failing math, failing English, what do I do? That's the question. Do you call that, like, special ed? I call that education, period. Because every type, most children will struggle with some subject at some point in their life. So then you get into this game, oh, clean IEP, you have to qualify, you have to be bad enough to qualify for an IEP. Who, lucky us, we were bad enough. And if you're not, you get a 504. And a 504 doesn't give you any services. And even the services don't necessarily remediate a disability, because the overall structure, I mean, I could go into federal, and I could go into state, and where the failings are, but it's just not relevant to Palo Alto Unified. Like I said, this is the best place I would pick in the entire Bay Area if I was starting over again, because we had the beauty of a pre-K through 12, including post-secondary program here. Is it perfect? No. But the staff and the administration is very willing, was always willing to work with me, and I was not the rosy-picture parent back in the day. I was, like, they were nightmares. I absolutely was. And so that's why we help other parents. And that's why I think our community advisory committee has done a phenomenal job, especially with partnering with PAST, with parents achieving student success, because we've broadened that scope to say, you know, who are the children that struggle? If you put special ed on a flyer, nobody comes. If you put, does your child have challenges or struggle in school, everybody comes. That's what, that's what we're talking about.
I'd like to address the renaming of schools issue. I believe when you spoke with Elena initially, you said that you felt there were heartbreaking divisions in the community right now. So first part of the question is, what do you think was surfaced through the renaming of schools issue, specifically the Fred Yamamoto suggestion? What kind of issue exists in the community that was surfaced through that?
Well, the analogy I'm hearing, that I didn't used to hear in this community before, is that to some of the Chinese population, that the name Yamamoto is really, is comparable to the name Hitler is to the Jewish population. I also had a conversation over the weekend with the parent in Mountain Villa Salto's area, who said that in her Indian culture, there is a symbol that looks like a swastika, but in reverse. And she said, this isn't the swastika, this is what we've always used in our culture, but I can't use it, because everybody sees it as swastika. So the learning opportunity is here, is here, that you can be named Yamamoto, you could even be named Hitler, although thankfully, nobody does that. The people that spoke at that June board meeting were incredible. There was one young woman who got up and said, what, person by person down the board meeting, and said, your name is Todd, Todd so-and-so, you know, murdered 10 children, your name is Terry, you know, oh, you know. It's not about the name, but yet it sort of was. I never, I feel that Palo Alto is a lovely community, and I never really considered it very diverse, because I grew up on the South Side of Chicago, and inner cities, Chicago is still one of the most segregated cities. So Palo Alto, fairly uniform, fairly white, but what's changing, and it's not just here in our community, it's everywhere, this current generation of youth, teens, young adults, they're not calling them, you know, Gen X or millennials anymore, they're calling them the plurals. It's a pluralistic society. White is not going to be the majority anymore. That's where we are, and that's where our education needs to be. So, I mean, I can name very few families in Palo Alto that can say we are all one thing.
Do you think that the school board has any role going forward, given this, you know, some new identity and the division that was revealed? Do you think the school board should do something? If you were elected, what would you recommend? How can we?
So it's education and its initiatives, and we're forming, we passed the resolution at the board meeting in June to form a committee related to this, community relations, human relations, human rights. I think the name hasn't been decided, but the formation of the committee, the resolution was passed. So, yeah, we have to name the committee, and we have to figure out what its charter is, and how we're going to measure it, and over what time period, and what the selection of its members will be. And it's never simple. You can't just say, one Chinese person, one Japanese person, one white person. Oh, well, you left out the Jewish person. Well, what if the African-American person is also Jewish? You can't, you can't go there. So it's education, and that's like, the board doesn't get to do that. They get to do this high-level oversight, and then the educators educate the children, but the board sets a tone, it communicates with the district. And the message should be one of inclusion, races, socioeconomic, ability, gender, everything. So that's not real concrete, but I'm not on the board yet, but vote by vote, those things will come up. And, oh, isn't it more important to, you know, do an initiative related to this group that feels discriminated, or this group that feels discriminated? Yes. The answer is yes.
So at the September 4th board meeting, you indicated that you oppose the hiring of a general counsel. And I was curious why that is, especially given what you just said a few minutes ago about, you know, over lots of legal spending on litigation, you know, special ed, and that kind of thing with families.
I heard the statement, but I didn't hear the question. Could you re-
Sorry. Why do you oppose the hiring of a general counsel?
Oh, okay. Well, first of all, they didn't vote on it, as you know, because they didn't have the votes to overturn the two-meeting rule. So first of all, when you're having a really, and it was referred to as just a hiring decision. Well, maybe a classified staff or even a teacher could be considered just a hiring decision. A general counsel is not just a hiring decision. It's a really big statement about our priorities as a district. So in the past two-ish years, since you used that timeframe earlier, the amount we've spent on legal fees has been somewhere from like 1.7 million up to like 2.5 million. And the concept that a general counsel will save the district money is misguided a little bit, I believe, because if you create all these legal expenses, and then you say, oh, here I am to save the problem by hiring somebody above that, well, you, you know, you kind of created that problem yourself in the first place. So if-
How, so, I don't understand that.
We just need so much more clarity. So we, I mean, the board's been discussing it for three years.
They approved it three years ago.
Okay. And it hasn't come up, come up for vote, it didn't come up for a vote on September 5th.
No, they voted to approve it three years ago. But that's beside the point. What is it, I didn't understand your point about adding somebody on top of the existing legal fees as just being an additional problem?
If I come back to our prime mission of this district, it's educating students for the 21st century to be the highest of their potential. And I want to look at where our resources will go according to that mission. And a lot of resources have gone into legal fees for the good, for the greater good, to protect students with disabilities, to protect students discriminated based on gender. Okay?
I think there'd be people that would argue that that's not where the legal expenses have gone. They've gone to undermine those things.
Okay. So, okay, exactly. Exactly. In title, they are going to those things. In practice, they are not. I'm finding that the parents are feeling less supported by the hiring of legal staff at the district office than, rather than more. But the message we're portraying from 25 Churchill is the opposite of that.
But how does that argue against a general counsel? I don't, I don't-
I just don't see a general counsel as fixing the problem, right now.
And the problem is?
Using our resources for the core mission of the district.
So your answer would be to just stop, reduce spending money on lawyers?
I didn't say that.
I know, I'm trying to-
If I were elected to the board-
How you would implement-
If I were elected to the board, I would look at the budget for the entire year, and the forecasted budget going forward. I would look at the past, and I would say, okay, we've poured X amount of dollars into these, you know, the in-house law firm, the Cozen, and the, you know, before we throw more good money after bad, let's really look at that job description. So, you know, a lot of people said, oh, well, yeah, let's hire that general counsel to protect the students with disabilities. Well, there's no mention of that experience in the job description at all. So how is it, you know?
I don't, I don't remember anybody arguing that that was the reason to hire the general counsel.
Well, some of the members of the community that spoke at that meeting did say, yes, we absolutely need to protect those students. So it, I can't go back and undo what's been done by the board three years ago. I can only go forward. And my feeling going forward is that we need, we have a brand-new superintendent, we need to work together, we need to use our resources wisely. And the first thing I would do on the board is not say, bring on that general counsel. We've got some serious questions that need to be answered. We've had some huge budget mistakes under the past couple of years on the board. So how do we know that that money's going to be spent wisely, that that person's resources and time are going to be spent wisely? I don't have a lot of confidence right now. Maybe I'll get more confidence once I'm on the board, but right now, I don't have enough answers to that question about why and who and what that person would be doing with their time to justify that hiring decision at this point.
Are there changes, or is there something you would advocate for if elected, in order to rein in the spending on external law firms, if you don't believe that a general counsel would help that?
Again, it's the big picture. I don't have the budget in front of me, I don't have it memorized. I've been looking at it, but there's, that's a lot more work that we will have to do as a board with our staff, our new chief business officer. That's a lot of work that we will have to do together. But I can't tell you right now the exact numbers that I would change, and exact which law firm I would or wouldn't-
I don't think that's what she's asking. I think what she's asking is, how, if you're not going to bring someone in the way other organizations do, to manage outside attorneys, to keep their fees down-
Oh, I see.
Then how else are you, what do you propose to do to attack that problem?
We might, and I'm going to- We might, and I'm going to cage this with, I'm not on the board yet. We might have enough people to manage that already.
So to have a non-lawyer managing the outside lawyer?
We have a Title IX compliance person. There's staff under that person, there's staff over that person.
Right.
I believe they have some legal expertise.
Who has the legal expertise there?
I don't have the resumes in front of me, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I believe they have the knowledge and they can get the knowledge. If they have questions about what they legally can and cannot do, there's a general counsel job opening at the California, the Association of School Boards. I'm sure they'd be happy to advise us. Before I throw $250,000 at a vague job description for a general counsel, I would say, let's be clear. Who do we have? What are we doing? Let's give our new superintendent a chance to come up to speed, and let's work together instead of in opposition to each other. Because if the board has these decisions set and done, and the superintendent comes in, then are they destined to clash? Or how are they going to, how are they going to work together? I want to make sure that that happens.
So of course, one gigantic expense for the district is staffing, and I wanted to ask you about labor negotiations, which currently the board is voting on after it's been negotiated and then the union signs off on it or ratifies it, and then, then it's kind of exposed to the public. Do you feel like there's any point in, at which those negotiations and the details of those negotiations should be surfaced for public comment or some way for the public to know what's being negotiated, short of it coming to the board and it being a done deal?
I trust, I trust our teachers, and I trust, I trust our teachers' union. And I don't, I trust them to negotiate fairly for what the teachers deserve, what the classified staff deserves, what the administrative staff is a different, but you're talking teachers, as I understand it. Is that correct?
Sure.
The teachers' union contract, the classified.
Classified identity, yeah. Teachers. I don't know why, I don't have reason to say that I would change the way that's done. But I'm not familiar, I don't know enough offhand to say if the public wants to know something about teacher union, you know, salary negotiations, can they or can they not access that information? I'm not, not clear on that.
Right, currently, they can't. Everything's closed.
The agreement is closed.
I've tried to go to meetings, and I've been turned away. Okay, and so, so is our, if our teachers' union is under the statewide umbrella, like, are we able to bust that open here in Palo Alto?
It's not required. In fact, the contract says that both sides, if both sides agree, it's open.
Okay.
Teachers have always wanted it closed, but, but to your point, you trust the teachers, is what you said. What do you mean by that in the context of union negotiations?
What I mean is that, that the, the salaries and the raises that they're asking for are not out of line for the expectations of the job that we're putting on them.
But isn't that the point of negotiations, is that there's limited resources? The district has to decide whether it can afford certain things?
Yeah, so maybe that general counsel salary could help some teachers. I mean, that's what I'm saying here.
I'm just trying to understand your view of negotiations about a union contract.
I'm not, I can't give you more detail at that, at that level at this point. I don't, I don't know enough about it yet, but I will find out. I will find out.
Okay. So I wanted to address some comments you made about the board's decision to form an ad hoc committee on the Stanford GUP. And we've continued to practice for this election season of asking all of the non-incumbent board candidates how they would vote as action comes before the actual board right now as the campaign progresses. And so you wrote to me in an email that, I was about sort of who would serve on this committee, and you wrote about Ken Dauber and Todd Collins having spouses employed by Stanford, and you said, "It is highly likely that they will not negotiate in the best interests of the district, as doing so could negatively impact their spouse's employment or advancement at Stanford." I agree with Ms. Baten-Caswell that it is likely that the public will perceive this as a conflict. So I'm hoping you can elaborate on that and how you see that as a conflict of interest. And I have a follow-up question.
Okay, well, Mr. Collins wasn't up for consideration on, on the ad hoc committee. And so he did present some very hard data that I've yet to see verified by anybody, and I'd love to see verified by somebody, but finding somebody unbiased in Palo Alto with regard to Stanford and the district, I haven't seen anybody step up yet. But his numbers, if true, and I have no reason to believe that his numbers are not accurate, should be part of this conversation. But he wasn't nominated or self-nominated to be a part of the, the ad hoc.
Ken Dauber was.
Yeah. I, it's not how I would have voted.
Okay, and when I raised your comments to Ken to get his response to, to what you said, he said that you indicated to him that I had omitted clarifying information from your quote, from what you sent me, and I was curious if you could clarify that.
No, no, I, I had said something verbally that I hadn't given you in writing, and then you asked me for it, and I think then I did.
But I believe what you said to me was about the Todd's analysis and Stanford doing its fair share. It didn't relate to the conflict of interest issue.
Oh, okay, but ask your question again, I'm sorry.
So why did you indicate to Ken Dauber that I omitted some information from what you sent me?
I believe he misheard me, or I believe I misspoke, but what I meant to convey to Mr. Dauber, and I don't have that transcript available unless somebody was recording it, and I was not, I believe what I said was that I spoke to you and gave you this additional information that it was not in writing, and that that was the part that I wanted included. And so I believe we did clarify that afterwards.
But that, what you said in person was unrelated to the conflict of interest issue?
Mr. Collins, I should, I just, he, he was not part of the ad hoc committee. There was a conversation on the board about whether this was a conflict or would have the appearance of a conflict. In general, it's, it's not good form unless you, if you have options, it's just not good form.
So just one last question on this. You, the, your quote had to do with it being a negotiation. This ad hoc committee, there was no negotiation. This ad hoc committee was to advise the superintendent.
Yes.
Not to engage in negotiation with Stanford.
Yes, I understand.
So what was unclear about this to me is why you would make the statement that you felt that in, that in negotiations, that if Collins or Dauber were on that ad hoc committee, they would make decisions in the interest of their spouses rather than the interest of the district.
Okay.
First of all, they weren't going to be in a position to do that, because that wasn't the charge of the ad hoc committee. And second of all, what would make you think that they would put their spouse's employment situation, which is pretty far removed from the district's interest, given that the district has no decision-making authority anyway on this whole thing? And what this really goes to is board relations and how, how you, if you're elected, will function with your colleagues on the board.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That conversation at the board meeting that night, I found disturbing for a variety of reasons. For one thing, the motion that was made and the ensuing conversation about amending it was largely not captured by staff. So the captioning and the amendments were, were verbal. And if you're, have a motion that the board can see and the community, the board member, I mean, the community that's observing the board meeting can see, and then you're amending it, you can see those amendments, then you know what you're amending, but it wasn't happening that way, and it didn't happen until quite far into the process. So I do believe I was not the only one that was trying to keep up in, in the folks that were watching in person or online and saying, what are we voting on? And the two-meeting rule was rolled up into it.
But that's not my question. That, that discussion went on way too long, and it was, and you're right. But, but my question had to do with your statements that, number one, that there would be negotiations, which was never the intent of that ad hoc committee, and number two, your lack of faith that two board members whose spouses work for Stanford who don't have a technical legal conflict would have the best interests of their spouses ahead of the best interests of the district.
Okay.
That's a pretty harsh thing to say.
I can clarify, I can clarify. And I do have immense faith in both Mr. Dauber and Mr. Collins. I would say that it is, it would not be ideal to have an ad hoc committee that's... There's a lot of nuance there of who on the board gets direct access to the superintendent. Okay? So if that ad hoc committee of two or three?
Two, can't be three.
Two, is, is in direct conversation with the superintendent, and the other board members are not, then yeah, they have leeway. They have leeway because the superintendent negotiates, who just moved to Palo Alto, by the way. I mean, like I said, it's hard to find unbiased folks.
They all have access to the superintendent. They meet with them on a regular basis.
And some have more than others. Some have more than others. The board chair has a lot of access, the, this ad hoc committee will have a lot of access.
So that was your reasoning behind wanting Terry, or not Terry, but Melissa and Jennifer?
I think Mr. D'Antoni would have been an excellent member of that ad hoc. Oh, Ken and Jen were appointed as that ad hoc.
Right.
I believe so, yeah.
She is on ad hoc. All right, well, let's move on. Let's move on to another.
I wonder if we need to go into our quick, quick hits.
Yeah, you want to try some of those?
Yeah, so just, just some issues and then a quick answer, if we could do that. The teacher housing proposal that the county's moving forward with, they're asking all districts to contribute 600,000-ish. Is that something that you feel is a good idea and a good expenditure for the district?
So far, Fidel D'Antoni has agreed to, to commit that money, and none of the other districts have agreed to discuss it, have voted on it yet, or have even said strongly one way or the other. I do think it is worth considering, and it goes in concert with what our city council agrees to contribute. I believe they're asking the city council for 3 million as well. So that goes, city-school liaison work would go hand in hand. Nobody's going to want to go first, because if one of the four school districts, not the Fidel D'Antoni goes first, then the others are going to go, you know, whatever. So, but it goes in connection with what our city council will do.
So irrespective of, of what the other districts do, then you would think that it's, it's worth it?
It is worth pursuing, absolutely. It's absolutely worth pursuing. I mean, we have that property that they're talking about on grant by the courthouse, and you know, there's this new committee discussing what's happening over at Coverley. But housing in general is clearly an issue, we have a shortage of, and teachers in particular do have the need. So from what I'm hearing, I would be in support of pursuing it further.
And how would you handle the current challenge to the district regarding the district elections and the threatened lawsuit that we need to either perhaps fight a lawsuit or acquiesce and convert to a district election?
That's a, that's a rock and a hard place. I know Redwood City lost it, I know a couple of the other districts have had to go that way.
So if you were on the board right now, what would you be wanting to do?
Besides asking a general counsel that we haven't hired yet? I don't know enough about it at this point. I don't think it's the right decision, but I'd have to look into what we can do about it, how much it would cost and whether it'd be worth it.
So you would, you basically fundamentally oppose district elections, but it's a matter of legal strategies to mitigate the districts?
From what I know, the rationale behind a lawsuit, I don't know that it applies to the demographics of Palo Alto, from what I've seen.
Why don't we just stop there? Because I know we've got some other trickies here.
Sure. The district's homework policy, do you believe that there's problems with the homework load and scheduling such that some further action needs to be taken to implement?
I think we need to continue looking at that for sure. I think we've had, I hear more about it at the high school level than I do at the elementary these days, but I need to get back in touch with what's happening at the, at the lower levels. And had gun, when gun switched from, to the block schedule, the load, homework load decreased dramatically, but depending on how many APs you're taking. So I think we do still need to look at that for sure, because sometimes it can be a lot of busy work and it cannot be achieving goal at setting up to attend, so.
As a, as a gun parent of a high school, I mean, as a high school parent, you have been exposed to schoolagie, I assume, and the controversy at GANAM about the implementation of that. Where do you find yourself now about that process? Are you satisfied or not?
Given that my 16-year-old doesn't tell me much.
So that's, you're the perfect parent then.
It seems to be going fairly smoothly compared to where we work. She still tells me she has one teacher who won't touch schoolagie.
Have you, do you look at schoolagie? I mean, as a parent, do you?
I have, but, but like I said, one of my kids is already graduated, and the other one is, is doing pretty well on her own. But I'm, it's there when I need it. I still have to ask her, do I find this on schoolagie or infinite campus? I just still have to explain to me, you know, which things are where, because we're not a cohesive system yet, but she tells me that when I ask her.
Do you support the proposal to limit board terms?
I think it's going to pass on the ballot. I particularly wouldn't have said that I felt we needed to spend that money right now. I believe it was 150,000 to get that on the ballot in November while we're laying off classified staff. This was at the board meeting, I don't remember if it was June or which meeting it was, but when the classified union was speaking in defense of a music secretary named Emily, who's the heart and soul of the school and has been here for, for ages, and you know, her budget's being cut, but you know, oh, let's, you know.
But do you support the concept of having term limits, is the question?
Given that most of the districts around here don't do it, it probably wouldn't have been high on my list.
So do you oppose it?
My vote will be confidential. It's not some, it's, my vote will be confidential. It's not something that I would have advocated strongly for, unless I had more information to change my mind. At this point, it's not something I would have advocated strongly for.
If you had been on the board last year, I'm curious if you would have voted to report weighted GPAs on high schoolers' transcripts?
I think we did the right thing in that decision. The fact that GANAM and PALLI didn't is kind of ridiculous. We both are reporting now. I think that's the right decision.
Then there were teachers and staff who expressed concern about the harm that that could potentially do to student mental health and well-being and sort of the push to be more balanced about academic work. Was that at all a concern for you?
There's a lot of factors in that, yeah. I mean, academics pressure is just one of them. There's a lot of factors in that. That is a concern. But for what we did in, when the board made that decision, I think they did the right thing by equalizing where we are right now, but mental health and well-being.
Is that because of the controversy that erupted, or because you felt it was the right substantive decision? Because the teachers were pretty united in opposition to that decision.
Yeah, and the parents were pretty united in support of it.
Right, so it harkens back to our earlier discussion about student interests and student lobbying.
What it gets into is where do we, you know how Palo Alto Unified is compared with the Nutria School District outside of Chicago, and I think Scarsdale or Sycamore City? That consortium of districts, I think, is, needs to be in communication about the college arms race situation that we're in. And weighted GPAs, APs, it all feeds into it. The Harvard turning the tide report from a couple of years ago, talking about what we are going, what we need to start looking for instead of just GPAs and, and test scores. Again, nobody wants to go first.
What about zero period? What was your view on?
I think we did the right thing there. And I know the students were really opposed. I think we did the right thing there. Be the adult in the room. My kids would eat, you know, ice cream for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. Sometimes you've got to be the adult in the room.
Stacy, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.